Mr. President, I'm going to leave my camera off, at least for now, I'm eating. So while some people might like to see that, me eating is like a trip to the zoo, so.
Having seen that in person, I'm going to thank you, thank you in advance for leaving your camera off.
Well.
And that motion?
Amen and amen.
Well, I'm showing 12 noon on the dot. And I'd like to call this work session to order. Today, we are hearing from Mr. Cobb and his staff on roads. As is always the case, no questions will be taken by the public during a work session. And before we get started, I just want to thank all of my colleagues on council who have really done a fantastic job in participating and showing up, whether in person or on Zoom. I know that it's been, that we've had a lot of work sessions. And we've got to make some awfully tough decisions, as is always the case with six penny ballots. But I just really want to thank all of my colleagues for their dedication throughout the last several weeks in participating and also all of the organizations and city staff who have come before us with their requests. I know this isn't an easy thing to do and in today's financial reality, certainly the needs are far greater than the resources, but thank you. With that, Mr. Cobb, as I've asked all of our presenters, would you like questions as you go? Or would you like to complete your presentation and then take questions?
President White, I would recommend, this is broken into two pieces. So I have a pavement management portion and then I've got a little spiel on Converse. So I think we break it into two question components, if that's okay with you, sir.
That would be fine, but that, the ball's in your court, so please proceed.
We've got a little technical difficulty, as soon as we get the PowerPoint up, we'll get her started here. Okay, I guess I'd like to start first thanking all of you for your patience and waiting for me to be, I would say, last, but I'd like to say not least, I would hope. Um, but as I've indicated, I've got two projects in front of you. I've got what I call priority one, which is our payment maintenance stabilization. And priority number two, which is the Converse Avenue Reconstruction Project. And although both are very important pieces to our greatest asset in our city. It now roughly, I'm looking at about 1.3 billion dollars. So I know that other folks have come in front of you. But I want to assure you that our largest asset is our roadway system. And that 1.3 billion is a pretty big number. Who I have with me today, I have two folks, Mr. Thomas Mason, who's the MPO Director. He is going to present on the Converse Avenue Reconstruction Project. They're currently going through a study right now. And secondly, Christopher is with me here. Mr. Yany has been, he was formerly with the MPO. And I have to read off my card because I don't remember his dates. But from 1997 to 2002, he was a senior planning technician. He started the pavement management program basically within the city of Cheyenne at that time. And he worked with the traffic engineer on traffic studies, traffic calming and signal timing recommendations. Then he moved to Arvada. He spent about 12 years in Arvada and was basically the pavement management coordinator. So we're very fortunate to have him and I've kind of recruited him to help me with this and kind of guide where we go. So he is a great asset. He ran a budget from about 2.3 to about 14.2 million. And as a direct result of presentations like this, understanding our value of our infrastructure and where we should be. And with that, go a little quick agenda here. I'll try not to waste anybody's time, but we're looking at our payment maintenance stabilization. We'll do a little overview of the pavement management, some terminology. I know some of you have heard some of these terms, but just kind of want to review some small items. And where we are today with our aging infrastructure, what will happen if we don't get additional funding? And we'll work out some work plan scenarios about some different recommendations that we would make. I just lost the screen, Jennifer. Okay, what was our funding history? And we're going to go back in time to about 1978 to show you what we've done in the past. Some of our recommendations, and then I'll take questions from there. And then the second half is the Converse Avenue Reconstruction Plan. We'll look at overview of the quarter study, the recommendations, some construction costs, and then questions as well. Can you switch, please, Chris? I apologize, President, why we've got some technical difficulties?
No, no worries, we'll be as patient as you need us to be.
I mean, it is Tom, though. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We get it, I butchered a meeting earlier today with my funders, so I totally understand it.
I was just in the middle of my, I just had this going down, you got my thunder is going to be rolling backwards. Okay. Okay, all right, everything fine now? I'll continue, President White, if that's okay?
Please do, thank you, Jen.
So overview of pavement management, you, sorry, please. So three components of our payment management program. Basically, field inspection, the condition analysis, and our payment maintenance and repair and planning recommendations. So with the field inspection, you know, we conduct that every four years. And that is no small coincidence with as we up the fifth penny every time, it coincides to those years. So we do a citywide payment condition analysis. We verify the WIS, the lane miles, and we do a complete database update. And every year, or every four years, as you know, we're adding roadway miles to our system. The condition analysis then looks at the current pavement conditions. It develops models to predict our future conditions. And you're going to see some pretty cool things that we can show you on this today. The pavement maintenance and repair planning recommendations where we develop these work scenarios. And then they have also developed a summary report and project documentation. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Christopher and he's going to talk a little bit more about the program itself. I know some of you have heard this before, but it may be a little bit review with a little bit of patience. But I know we have some new folks on council.
Thank you, Tom. What we have right here is, what is the software that we're using? We're actually using Paver. And it was sponsored by the US Air Force, the US Army, US Navy and the Federal Aviation. They actually correlated with the Corps of Engineers to actually help develop this software. And the Corps of Engineers actually developed the software in the early 70s. And then, as you can see, that we go into a field inspections for mobile asset collections. By doing that, we use a vehicle, as you can see on the photo, up to the upper right is a photo of a vehicle that actually does the inspections as they're driving down through the road. You probably saw this in 2018. And down below is a kind of a typical picture of the software that when you're opening it up, this is the, all the information that you're looking at throughout the software. The terminology is that we're actually looking at in pavement condition index, the PCI. You'll probably hear more of PCI throughout this presentation. PCI, what we're looking at is to get this PCI rating, we're looking at the stresses that we're evaluating, the type of distresses and the severity of the stresses to come up with the condition of each section of roadway. And as you can see on the upper slide on screen, you'll actually see that the PCI ratings run from zero to 100 and have a category from good all the way down to failed. And you can break those even down even further and try to categorize them either as a just good, fair and poor. We'll stay with the major categories of good all the way down to fail. And when we're looking at trying to coordinate, what does our streets look like with the PCI rating? So we're looking to break down of the severity between A through F. And then A is the PCI rating from 85 to 100. And that's on the picture down below on the right. That is from the green, dark green to the light green category. And that's a brand new street. And then over time, when it starts aging, you'll start seeing a little bit of cracking conditions occur. And category, and the B is PCI rating from 70 to 84. And that is on the right, from a light green down to the yellow. And what you see is the asphalt ages, it's starting to crack even more, creating more distresses that you see. The C PCI is equal to the 55 through 69. That's the range on the right between the yellow and the red. And what you'll see is more distresses are occurring on the road and creating more discomfort in driving. D is a PCI rating between 40 and 54. And then F is the PCI rating between 0 and 39. And on the lower right-hand corner, you see the D going to F. And that is between the red all the way down to the F. And when you see that, that's where the distresses really become apparent. You see a lot more discomfort in driving and a lot more distresses on the road, a lot more, you know, alligator rutting, alligators and rutting in that area. And it's really kind of a real hard ride quality. The recommended maintenance schedules that we really want to try to focus on is going back to typical basic treatment programs for collectors and arterials. On the left side, you'll see the categories of good through failed. And our PCI rating from 0 to 100. And down below, across the bottom, is the years that are extended over time. The blue line on that upper screen that we're looking at is a brand new street. And if we did nothing to it, would actually start to drop in PCI rating and drop all the way down over 20 years to where it's actually, you know, a really, really failed road. What we want to do is when it reaches about a 70 PCI, we want to make sure that we get the cracks sealed up. So we want to do a crack seal program on that portion. And then a year later, we want to introduce a patching and surface treatment. And that's where the green line that you see on here as well, if I can get my cursor to show up. The cursor itself, you can see the green line, we're going to introduce a little more patching and surface treatment. And the surface treatment is going to actually seal the entire surface of the roadway. And then it would just follow that same trend down. But once we reach a PCI of 30, that's our critical point of actually having to address a milling overlay to bring this road back up to 100. And then it follows that same trend. And then what we can do is then repeat the same, the same three treatments over and over and keep these streets in a better condition. And then at some point in time, the bottom part that we're not replacing will have to be replaced. And we'll have to probably end up doing a reconstruction at that time. But we want to extend that out as far as we can as possible. And then the slide on the screen on the bottom is the typical programs for collectors and local streets. And it's always very similar to the same thing, brand new street, blue line, following the 20-year timeframe. But wanting to do a crack seal program at roughly the PCI level of 70, bring it up just to seal up the cracks. Then come back a year later, do all the patching that's needed on those streets, on those same crack sealed streets that we did. And then do a surface treatment to seal up the roadway network and keep it looking good. But we also want to do this, repeat this several times throughout the, every five years until it reaches the critical point of 30. And then we'll repeat and mill off the surface and then put a new asphalt overlay onto it, bring it back up to 100. And then follow that same scenario. This is another that will continue to repeat and extend the life of our roads. The reason why we're doing more surface treatments between the brand new road and a milling overlay is because the amount of roads that we have in locals, they're just a lot of them that we have to do. So we need to extend those roads out further because they do have less traffic. The collectors and arterials that have more traffic tend to have, we have to do a little bit more milling overlays more recent. So what have we done in, from 2010 to 2020, that's been, projects been completed? So this picture will actually show you all the streets that we've actually done throughout those, that timeframe. And as you can see, that the majority of our streets have been arterials and collectors. And we have a few areas that have been some neighborhood areas or local streets. And this is a good start for Cheyenne. Where are we today with the aging infrastructure? In 2018, the asphalt and concrete streets that were inventoried on the centerline miles, there was 350.81 miles done. Down in the below on the chart, you'll see that our categories for the PCI, 0 to 100. And then the conditions from good all the way down to failed. And as you can see, the upper third, three categories, good, satisfactory and fair, we're showing our principal arterials, which is the red, the minor arterials, which are green, and the major collectors, which are purple. We're showing that the majority of them are in good, satisfactory and fair. And that's, that's a good thing. The ones that we really come concerned with are the ones that are in the poor, all the way down to fail. And you can see there's a small amount of principal arterials that are in the poor condition. And then the same thing with the minor arterials and the collectors and locals. The thing that we want to look at is, these are the worst ones that we need to work at and keep getting those up to the good, satisfactory and fair conditions. But we also want to keep the good streets in good condition. And this slide, you know, this indicates our PCI rating that in 2018, our PCI rating was at 70.66. And that's, that's pretty, that's a good location to go with. And that translates to when we start looking at just separating out all the functional classification of our streets. Our principal arterial streets are at 78.9. And our minor arterials are at 77.13. Those are really good. Those are above our, the national standard of a 72 set by the Corps of Engineers. And then the major collectors, the minor collectors and the locals, this is where it's starting to show a concern. Because we're below 70 and we're even definitely below the Corps of Engineers standard of 72. Looking at it just a little bit different at the overall PCI rating. The good category, and looking at the categories of the PCI from good to failed. Looking at the pie, and as you notice, that the pie chart, the both greens, the dark green and light green, good and satisfactory, are there over 50% of this pie. This is a good, this is a good, very good start. But what we want to do is address the fair, the poor, the very poor, the serious and failed. However, when it hits a failed, these streets have reached a point where we cannot address these streets rapidly. We have to push those off to a later date. Because what happens is if we start addressing these failed streets first, reconstructing a street, bring it up to a 100% level. By doing one failed street, we end up losing ten good streets. And that's not what we want to do. We want to actually keep chipping away at all these streets. And when the time is right, come back and replace the ones that are failed. So here we are, is what will happen without the additional funding? Right now, we're at 4.5. And so this is a look snapshot at when the location, the city was evaluated in 2018. And moving ahead, the Paver predicted a scenario for us to what it would look like. This is 2025 PCI ratings of what it looks like. And you can see that there's a lot more red occurring in this area, a lot more yellows. And if we advance to 2030 PCI ratings for a snapshot, it gives you an appearance of there's a lot more that are starting to fail. It's, it's something that we need to really consider. Now, I'd like to take a, just be quiet and I'm going to back up to the 2018. And I'm going to move through these rather rapidly to give you the impression of what's going to occur in the next 10 years.
Be it a way with Christopher, and that's based on our current funding at 4.5, at 4.5 million per year. So this again, at 4.59. You might want to run it one more time. 2018, 2030, so you can see the significant difference.
Thank you, Tom. So what I ended up doing is, we had Paver help create some work plan scenarios. Scenario one is, is actually maintaining the 4.5 million dollars for 10 years. And as you can see, we're just having a slow decline over the 10-year timeframe. And on the, on the left side, you'll see the PCI ratings ranging from 50 all the way up to 85. And our years going from 2018 all the way across over to 2030. But as you can see, the blue line, which is scenario one, it declines all the way down to about a, I believe it's up 55. But what we're doing right now is scenario two, because we got 11 million in 2021, 7 million in 2022, but we're moving back to 4.5 million for the last eight years. So if you're looking at this red line, you see that we jump up in the PCI ratings. And then it tries to maintain a little bit with the $7 million, but then going back to 4.5 million, we're declining again all the way down. And we're matching, is very close with, you know, basically running the scenario one. Scenario three, we wanted to look at it as well and try and to help stabilize a little bit more and running 11.8 million dollars per year for 10 years. And as you can see that by running that scenario, we could actually maintain a little bit more, but we're still declining a little bit over a 10-year timeframe. Scenario four, which is the purple line, is the national standard set by the Corps of Engineers to maintain a PCI of 72. And that's where it's going to be spending about 13.7 million dollars per year for 10 years. And as you can see over on the right, the purple line is really made flattening out and maintaining a really good flat line of our network. If we had all the money that we could get for doing all the maintenance of all our roads, we would be doing scenario five, and that's the backlog elimination plan. That's the light blue line. Now, backlog elimination is looking at all the streets that we deferred maintenance, that we delayed or didn't have funding for and were able to get every year that when it was needed to be done. And that starts to generate a lot of backlog, and we do have a lot. But in order to do, to eliminate this in a 10-year timeframe, we would need to run a 21.7 million dollars for nine years. And then the last year, we would end up being able to start dropping down to a 16.3 for the last year. Well, as you can see on the slide, the blue line, light blue line, we go all the way up to above 80. And then we start stabilizing out about 82 on a PCI. Then what I'll do is I'll increase this a little bit larger to give you a better view of the, these charts, so that you can actually see it a little bit better. Though the blue line again is 4.5 million per year. That's no change in the budget, it would just continually down spiral down to, you know, about a 55. The current funding that we are using right now, which in 2021, giving 11 million dollars in 2021 and 7 million dollars in 2022, and then the remaining eight years going back to 4.5 million. That's the red line, that's where we bump up, you can see a bumps. And then follows the same trend all the way down over 30 years. The same thing with the green is, you know, stabilizing but still falling. The purple, which is the national standard, setting that 72 and going across and maintaining a more flat line. And again, the backlog elimination and reaching at an 82 PCI rating over a 10-year timeframe. That'd be the Cadillac that we would need, but unfortunately, I'm not sure if that's going to be something we're going to be able to do. Moving on to the next one, I'll give this back to Tom Cobb.
So this is a look back in time, you know, what was our fifth penny funding over the, over the history that we could go back to? And Christopher did quite a bit of research on this, and this is actually Paver generated. If you look back to 1978, and I can't read it quite as well as I was hoping, but my memory serves me correctly, it's about 325,000 per year that we used to spend on road maintenance. We got a little bump in the 1990s. And then as we continued up that trend, and I cannot see it, Christopher, I apologize. In about 1998, little over 2 million, and then probably in around 2014 is where we started to get into roughly 4.5, which is about where we're at today. So this slide, what I want to basically illustrate is, our funding really hasn't changed that much. We had a small bump, and I'll show you in today's dollars what that is. And again, the top of the graph, and I didn't explain as I was going to, is the PCI index over time. And you can see that when the roads were newer and we had less traffic, we didn't add lane miles, we were really in good shape. And as our population increases and our traffic increases and our lane miles increase, you see a steady decline in that PCI index. And again, it's the overall one, as you move to the right, you can see the 70.66 that Chris pointed out that we're at in 2018. And then it corresponds to the graphs that he previously showing you. You can see the red is the little bump that we had in funding. And again, if you look down at the bottom, it's the funding over time. And with that short bump in about 2014, roughly 2014, we've actually got a little bit of an increase before then. And I'm not sure where that came from, but again, but relatively over time, if you look back in 1978 again, the equivalent of 325,000 is just a little over a million. And as we, again, it was a 4.5 million. Is roughly about 5.3 million in today's dollars back in that timeframe of about 2006. Is that correct? Thank you. Just again, just pointing out again, that we've increasing mileage, we're increasing traffic, we're continually declining. So our recommendations, obviously our goals and objectives are really to stabilize our payment maintenance. You know, we're going to, we want to focus on preservation, we want to really optimize our treatment plan. And, and some of the new things that we'd like to incorporate are what we call complementary plans. So we were able to then bring in a concrete contractor one year and then one that specializes in that. And then we can bring in an asphalt contractor the second year that specializes in that. What we're getting now is, sometimes we get teaming relationships where our costs are going up. So we think we do by doing this, we can be more cost effective with the taxpayers' money. We really want to look at then also the cost benefit value. And as Christopher indicated, you know, we can't spend all our money on the worst first approach. If we do that, we're going to expend all our budget on two or three projects and then we lose everything. The other thing that we're looking at as far as our goal is, how much work can the contractors in this area complete in one construction season? You know, over time, we've, my predecessors prior to me, there was some carryover. We ended up getting projects that started two years ago that continued for over three years. The public didn't see any progress. So we really have to find what I call the Goldilocks point, you know, not too little, not too much, but just right. So what is that? So a final recommendation, we were looking at at least a 10.5 million over a 10-year period. So which means an increase of about 6 point million per year, our current budget is 4.5. Now, if you remember back on the graph, I know that there's a lot of asks here. And I'm trying to feel that where our share is, again, And I, I, I'm trying to feel that where, where, where our share is again, I want to protect our 1.3 billion dollar asset. So I'm looking at 6 million. If I had, if I, if I, if you were to tell me that I have anything I wanted, I'd tell you I'd want an additional 7.8. But I think we can live with the 6.0 and maintain our PCI enough to be able to carry us through. Again, this is a per year, so we'd be looking at for the four year period, at least 24 million minimum. With that, I'd like to take your questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Very informative. I know that when Sam Berta initially presented on this same subject a couple of years ago and kind of introduced us to Paver, it was very informative for all of us. And, and so for our new colleagues, I'm sure it's very useful and it's, I certainly appreciate the recommendations that you brought us today. With that, are there any comments or questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, Royble.
Mr. Royble.
Um, just a quick question, you know, we're talking about contractors and how much they can get done, that type of thing. Would it be more efficient or would it be more cost effective to do it in-house, hire our own crew to do this, buy our own equipment?
Chairman, Chairman White threw you to, to, to Councilman Royble. That is a, is a difficult question to answer because I haven't looked at the investment of that equipment. I mean, if you are looking at what we're looking at, you would be looking at at least, just off the top of my head, probably three full paving crews plus their equipment and, and it's millions of dollars. So the investment, just off the top of my head, I, I would tell you that it would be more than what I'm asking for with the 24 million.
Thank you.
Good question. Uh, other questions?
Mr. President, Dr. Rini.
Dr. Rini.
So, um, Mr. Cobb, you said that we only have 4.5 million to spend on streets. Yet 80% of the sixth penny goes towards streets. And last year we collected 16.4 million in the fifth penny. 80% of that is like somewhere north of 13 million dollars. So what happens to that 9 million? Is it, I, I'm not sure I understand your figures.
Go ahead, Robin.
Yes, Robin Lockman, City Treasurer. This, we, everything over that amount, Dr. Rini, is the overage funds. So at the end of the four years, they're like the last time we received a little bit over 13 million dollars. And then that is allocated 80% to the different ballot oppositions.
But we're getting 13 points, some million dollars, 80% of the six of the fifth penny is 13 points, some million. And street and alley are only spending four and a half million every year. Then that should be after four years, that should be a pile of 36 million dollars.
I, yeah, so they get that the, the 4.5 million a year, that's what they're allocated and they could spend on their regular ballot. And then at the ballot, they also get the overage funds.
I know, but their overage then should be 36 million if we're getting, if we collected 16 million a year.
It's not a year, that's to, oh, you mean.
What do, then what do we collect annually off of that? Because, because you'd said, I think you said me it was 16 million in 2020.
Yes, and that includes the overage fund. So I mean, it, we, that's the amount of money we got from the tax for that whole year. But that is overage funds plus what the ballots are. So every year we're collecting overage funds. So that figure I gave you, the 16 million includes.
So with those figures, how much do you speculate they would have, you know, ridge at the end of the form, at the end of the four years?
So for the 2015 to 2018 ballot, they had, the total amount of the overage was 13.9 million. And so 80% of that overage funds they were able to spend, but they can't spend it until the end of the ballot. Even though we're receiving them the whole time.
Right.
And spend it until we're done collecting everything, because we don't know what that total is going to be.
All right. Well, I don't want to argue this out and take everybody else's time, but I may have to sit down with you and have you draw it out for me.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Rini, and thank you, Robin. Other questions?
President White, this is Dr. Aldridge.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yep. I just wanted to say again, thank you, Tom, for your presentation. I know that when we talk about road maintenance, it definitely is probably not amongst the sexiest of our projects. By any stretch of the imagination, but vital to our community. And I appreciate the time you guys have put into this and we're really glad to see these presentations wrapping up and that it's, you know, all about getting the information to us. And I appreciate you helping to educate us on the issue of pavement and roads. So thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
President White, Tom Seiggrave.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes, I'm just, I know it's very, very early, but I'm wondering if Mr. Cobb could look into his crystal ball for this federal infrastructure program and what that may or may not mean for local communities.
President White threw you to Councilman Seiggrave. Councilman Seiggrave, we, you know, right now, we're, we're hearing a lot of different numbers coming out. In fact, I, I just spoke yesterday with Brendan Ames, obviously former, our, our, sort of our grants and, and economic development person here. With, with the era of Senator Lummis, he simply told me that we just simply don't know what to expect right now and just stay, stay in touch. I think we're looking at, we, we looked at a figure at one time at over a billion. I, I, I think now that's roughly half and what we actually see and how it ties into what we, what would say the COVID-19 is just unknown right now. So I, I can't be more specific than that, but as soon as I know information, I, I'll, I'll forward it to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, I have one question. We've, we've heard many accounts of dramatic increase in construction costs, et cetera. Have those increases over the past year due to the pandemic exhibited themselves in asphalt concrete as well?
President White, yes, they have. And, and we, we've been looking, thank goodness, just on the last three lettings that we've had. We've only seen about a 5% increase. You know, obviously I've heard numbers up to 30% on asphalt. We haven't seen it yet, but obviously I would, I would project it somewhere between the five and, and the three that we were looking at eventually.
Wow. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Laborn.
Thank you. Fascinating vast series of information that came forward. I look forward to reviewing it with the staff. This is, uh, obviously goes back quite a ways and has many considerations. So how those funds are allocated and earmarked and produced? I'm assuming that I can spend more time with the staff to try to understand better the pavement management system. The primary question that I have today is, uh, we've let several large contracts and there's work going on all over town. And I never did quite understand, and I'm not sure if we got a report, on how those contracts correlated to the pavement management system. And how they were chosen and determined, I think that the pavement management gives us a great tool. I recall from our last pavement management work session, a lot of information that probably I don't need to bring up today, but I have questions about. But one of the key things that I want to bring up here and was part of those in the information we got today was, are we going to put aside some funds for those gravel roads? As we know, particularly in Ward three, there's a lot of gravel roads in those pockets, county pockets. And how we can evaluate that and figure out a way to at least begin to bring those in, in some kind of a a manner that we could explain. So, Mr. Cobb, are we considering using, as I believe you're suggesting here, sixth penny funds for any sort of county pocket fund for improving those gravel roads and bringing them into asphalt and sidewalk?
President White threw you to, to Councilman Laborn. Sir, the, the, the answer is no. If I was going to look at the gravel road situation, our funding levels would have to be much higher. This is simply getting us to a point that when I'm considering serviceable, we're trying to find that Goldilocks again. If, if we were looking more in the category of the, and as Christopher can add anything here, we're probably looking at somewhere in the ballpark of probably 11 or 12 million dollar increase, even to closely make that, just based on what we know.
Thank you. I, I would say that this is something we need to consider. And I know that it's, uh, there's a lot of involvement here, but along some of those streets, we have roads that go from gravel to pave to gravel to pave and back and forth. And there's been a lot of progress there, but at what point do we at least have some sort of a fund to be able to pick the most useful area? That's, that's one of my concerns. And also I look forward to working with the staff to be able to dig into the pavement management system so that I can see the review of individual streets, like the street in front of my house and really understand its condition under that system. So I'm sure that I'll get a lot of help from the, the people involved and, and raise a lot of questions, but thanks.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Yes, President White, just like I tap, like I typed into the, into the chat. But Mr. Laborn does bring up a good point. I mean, bottom line, and these aren't necessarily even county pockets. I mean, we've got, you know, there are a handful of gravel roads that are in the city limits and have been for several decades on the north side of town. I mean, there's, I, I know you're familiar with the spot there over by the bowling alley. As well as just north of the entrance to the National Guard gates. So I mean, it's, it's not just pockets, frankly, it's, it's roads that are already you know, in the city limits and have been in the city limits for a long time. So I just wanted to state that, yes, I, I do somewhat agree with his comments. I mean, we, we do have that issue and have for quite a while where we have lacked a, a funding mechanism to get those areas caught up. And whether or not this is the appropriate way to fund those things, that is a consideration that we need to make.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I noticed that Mayor Collins has his hand up. Mayor, would you like to make a comment or do you have a question?
That was a mistake on my part. I was trying to hit the chat button. I think I hit the raise hand instead. My apologies.
No, no worries. Happens, happens to me all the time. Other comments or questions from council? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, Christopher. Very good information.
Do we still have Converse Avenue to talk about, guys?
Oh, yes, yes, we do. We do have item number two. So you're, since there are no other questions on the first presentation, let's proceed into the second part. Sorry about that. I almost forgot. Thank you.
President White, thank you. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and have Tom Mason from the MPO Director go ahead and take this from here and I'll close at the end. Thank you very much.
Chairman and members. Started by the.
Hi, Mr. Mason, go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me? I thought it was on, is it on?
We can hear you, Tom. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I can hear you.
Sorry, I moved to a mic that works. So the MPO took this planning project on at the request of the City Engineering Department to look at Converse from Del Range North to the Carlson intersection. About 20 years ago, with the story in Converse project, it was built through a, a improved three lane section with curved veteran sidewalk, but that ended about at Ogden Road. The section between Ogden South to Del Range is still basically a two lane road with no curb veteran sidewalk. It's just not improved at all to handle the type of traffic that's there now. Let alone, let alone the traffic that's going to be there in the future. When the section 20 property develops, it's fully, it's going to be full of houses and maybe some other commercial development. But we do know that there is a approximately 600 unit apartment complex. It's going to be built at the intersection with Converse and, and Carlson. So we undertook this planning project with Ayers Associates, our consulting team. That is looking at the entire project. They're reviewing the data associated with it, including the crash history where the crashes are taking place. They're looking at the existing traffic and the future traffic on the corridor to determine the capacity of the road and how wide the road really truly needs to be. So we're looking at the alternatives for the corridor to handle the traffic in 2045 and what intersections might need to be improved and where signals might be needed. So we're making those recommendations. So, though we are not completely, we're not totally done with the development of this planning project. The traffic analysis is complete. And the consultants have provided a recommendation for the reconstruction of the corridor from Del Range to Carlson. And first, that first involves widening Converse to six and actually maybe seven lanes, depending on all the lanes that we're still analyzing just north of Del Range. And that crosses the Bright Creek Channel, which means that that culvert that crosses Bright Creek most definitely is going to have to be widened. But further up the road as we travel north, it can transition to a three lane section north of Mason Way, north of the post office. And we're probably looking at traffic signals at Mason Way and at Point Bluff. We analyzed Ogden versus Point Bluff and Point Bluff is definitely carries more traffic and would be that intersection that would need a signal in the future. With the intersection with Carlson itself, we've looked at both the standard intersection and a roundabout. The roundabout during the peak hour traffic and the level of service in the future provides a little bit better level of service at Carlson than, than a standard traffic signal. And then we've also looked a little bit further north from the Carlson intersection up Converse. And we're really lacking a local street connection to Converse north of Ogden and north of Carlson. And so we're, we looked at three different feature. north of Ogden and north of Carlson. And so we're, we looked at three different future potential connections for local street access to all that traffic from the, from that western side of Buffalo Ridge. Doesn't all head south, but it could go west and connect with Carlson. So we again looked at two sections, a three lane section and a four lane or five lane section. These were preliminary drawings shown at our first public meeting where the one on the left is the three lane with a median. At, at the intersections, it would have a turn lane. Whether we had medians on our ultimate design of the road has yet to be determined, but they're just shown here as, as a visual effect. On the right-hand side is a five lane section with the center turn lane and/or meeting. Again, we haven't made that determination, but these were visuals shown at the public meeting. Now, this is a representation of what it could mean. This drawing shows the six lanes at this north of Del Range, which is on your left-hand side. Going southbound, we have a right turn lane, dedicated right turn, two straights and one left turn lane. And then northbound, there's two lanes where currently there's only one lane going northbound from the Del Range intersection. This is going to be reviewed further because for future traffic, we might actually need two left turn lanes from southbound Converse to Del Range. This drawing shows the transition from the six lane section to the three lane happening basically south of Mason Way. But we're, we will have new drawings that will provide to you that shows that transition happening north of the post office entrances. Next, and this shows the road as we continue north where the turn lanes would be. The center turn lane and/or medians again yet to be determined. And as we go further north and we hit the Carlson intersection, this Brian shows a standard intersection. And the next picture shows a potential roundabout intersection at Carlson. And that.
So Councilman, and I, I would like to say this is where I call the rubber meets the mat, so to speak. This is what you really want to know, what, what is going to cost? And so what, what we had the consultant break this up into some categories, just to give you an idea of the different improvements. So drainage improvements alone, including about storm sewer inlets, et cetera, we're looking at over $2 million just for those improvements. To widen the 10 by eight box culvert down by Del Range, about 244,000. The roadway improvements itself, we are about 5.948 million. The consultant has put a 20% contingency on this. So that's about a million and a half. And then they've also done an inflation at about 2% per year. So if we were looking at construction, we'd look at beginning somewhere in 2023. So that would be roughly $581,000. So the total, don't want to hear this number. It's more than I ever anticipated, but we're looking at about 11.356 million. I don't think we can find it that close. I'm saying 11.4 million dollars. I, I'd like to say on this project that, I mean, this is palatable, that we could do this in phases. We are looking at development of Section 20 as, as Mr. Mason has indicated. We've got the school coming online, a Carlson extension coming. All these things are, are coming and we need to be prepared. And I know we have many, many needs. I simply wanted to give you another option. And again, this is our priority too. We have, as, as Councilman Laborn has indicated, we've got gravel roads, we've got all sorts of issues. But again, this is where we're at and I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Questions from council?
This is Dr. Aldridge, President White.
Dr. Aldridge.
I just wanted to again throw you to Mr. Cobb and his associates to say thank you for being, being forward thinking and not waiting until, you know, there's a burning need and your hair is on fire to approach us for funding. So thanks for being forward thinking and planning ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Certainly good information regarding, I think what is without question the busiest intersection in the, in the state. Other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Laborn.
So do we have a figure on what the request is here for the sixth penny between these two projects? A number or the, the six penny ballot?
Mr. Cobb?
President White, through, through you to Councilman Laborn. The first is for 24 million for the pavement stabilization. The second is 11.4 million for the Converse.
Thank you. So now we have a good idea what we're going to be wrestling with here next week. Also, I was very curious about the Converse project and it had drainage and widening of those box culverts. I guess I'll get with you and look at how the Greenway connections are tied into this whole project. Because as we know, the Greenway is south of Del Range. And when you get north of Del Range, we've made some preparations and there are some opportunities there. And I think they do speak to those box culverts, but I think that if we're going to get into this, and as I'm sure we will over time, we need to make sure that those connections are of equal importance to the roadway. Thank you.
President White, I, through, through you to Councilman Laborn, I, I know it wasn't exactly a question, but just to, just to make you feel comfortable on this, that we did, and Mr. Mason can confer with this, but we did include the Greenway and it's included in the estimate that you see.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cobb. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Again, thank you, Mr. Cobb. I thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Mr. Mason. And lots of tough decisions. But if any, if we do have any questions in light of this presentation, can we reach out to you directly, Mr. Cobb?
President White, certainly.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll adjourn the work session and I hope everybody has a good weekend. Thank you.